Okay, we're going to reconvene here in open session. So, the first thing on our agenda is an approval of the consent agenda. And this will cover personnel, items of personnel and business services, correct? So, do I have a motion to consider the consent agenda?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gainer, is there any discussion? Anybody have any questions about it? It covers retirement, resignations, new appointments, changes in status, personnel to be granted, continuing contracts, approving leaves of absence. And then, under business services, we have a First Amendment to an lease agreement, approval of resolution declaring transportation impractical, and staffing contract for management service with Ren Hill Group.
I have a couple of questions. One for George, the lease agreement. I assume that you've already discussed this with the executive director at Park Synagogue?
Yes, this has already gone through their board.
Terrific. And this is, this needs to be signed before we can then submit our application with the City of Cleveland Heights, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
This is step one, then Melissa's going to help me from VAA. We're going to get in front of planning for step two.
Great.
We're also going to have a public meeting that was suggested by planning. My thought is to have it at the Bus Depot itself, invite the community to hear our thoughts and plans.
Great, thank you.
And, so, can you walk us through the process? So, we have just submitted a, another request to use that facility. Remind me, the term, the verbiage, the...
Bus parking lot?
Yes, well, no, the conditional use.
It's a conditional use, yes.
That's the term of art that I was struggling with. So, how does this play out if we are denied the conditional use permit or if the conditional permit, use permit that we get is of a shorter term than this lease is? How's that worked out?
Worst case, if we apply and, I do not get that sense right now from the city. I mean, I spoke with Mr. Wong about the process and, so I don't get that sense that would be denied, but we don't know until we do the process.
Right.
If that would be a worst-case scenario, if that did occur where they denied us that, we would have till the end of the year to get the buses off of Park Synagogue property. And our current lease with Park Synagogue, which expires October 1st, I did check with Matt Sagon, and we have an out, meaning we wouldn't, even though you signed this agreement, we have a right of a clause to get out of it.
Right. And, I think that's all.
Secondly, so, once it is, if it's approved at a lesser term, so say, we're asking for three years, if it's only approved for two, for whatever reason, we have two years to figure out what we're doing with the buses.
Right. That's my only question on this. Anybody else?
No questions on this, other than I just want to thank you, George.
Yes.
I know that this has been a lot of extra work for you and your team, and, you know, this originally wasn't, we were not thinking that we were going to ask for an extension, and now we are. So, I want to thank you for the extra effort that I know you and your team have put in to pull this together.
Not a problem, make it work.
So, thank you.
And remember, if you need, if you would like any compatriots?
I'm going to invite board members to the community meeting.
That's good, yes, very good.
Let us know when it is.
And to that matter, to the planning commission meeting, I'd be, I'd be happy to tag along for that as well.
Okay.
That's great.
Yep, definitely let us know when it is.
I will.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on this or anything else with the consent agenda?
I always ask the same question about impractical transportation. This is one child, how many do we have total on that list for the year? Do we know?
Probably a couple hundred. I can get the exact number for you. Those are the, those are the families that can apply for reimbursement if they choose, so choose.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so if you...
I can get, I'll get Scott to bring me a number, and I'll send that out.
Thank you.
And then, my only other comment on the consent agenda is, we have a number of our teachers who are moving to continuing contracts. And I'd just like to point out that this is a real moment of celebration for these members of our teaching staff, our professional teaching staff. These folks have invested a number of years in our district, and they are really making a long-term commitment to our, our district and our kids. And this should not go without being recognized. People think that tenure, and I have to use air quotes because tenure, as many of us think of it, is, is no longer in existence thanks to our right agenda. But nonetheless, it is, there are things that come with a continuing contract, protections that come with a continuing contract. And there is also things given up by a professional educator when they accept a continuing contract. They are much, it is much more difficult for that person to take a job elsewhere. So, it is a trade-off, and these folks, I just, you know, would like to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you for your commitment to our kids and our district, and I wish all of you a long and successful career with us.
All right, any other comments, questions?
Nope.
Well, I guess we'll vote. Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serene?
Yes. All right, moving along. So, now we will move into our work session, data series, part three. So, is Allison Byrd here? Oh, there she is. Will you please come up, Allison?
Hi, Stephanie.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me. I am Allison Byrd. I serve as the Director of Data Research and Assessment for the district. And this is actually the third in a series of three sessions around data topics. So, in the first session that was held in late September of the school year, we discussed the Ohio State tests and the state report card measures. So, when we think about the type of data that is, it's our most external measure, the one farthest away from classroom instruction or teacher development. During session two, we talked about internal measures, looking at core content area assessments and materials for specific grade levels. We looked at kindergarten, grade three, and grade six. And then today, we're actually going to look at what I would still define as an external measure, but it is given more frequently or administered more frequently than what some of our other vendor-based assessments, and it is easier to make connections with daily instruction. So, the tool that we're going to look at today is NWEA MAP. So, to start, I want to make sure that we define the acronyms used there. So, NWEA is, actually stands for Northwest Evaluation Association. They're a nonprofit, research-based organization that creates tests to measure growth and achievement. So, they offer a range of products to over 9,500 schools, districts, and educational organizations in 145 countries. So, MAP stands for Measures of Academic Progress, and it is one of the products in the NWEA MAP line. So, MAP is a computer adaptive test, and what that means is, if a student answers a question correctly, then the computer will give them a question that is more challenging. If they answer the question incorrectly, then the next question will be easier. So, its adaptive ability is designed to meet students exactly where they are, and it should, like, challenge our top learners while not pushing the, our students who may be below a grade level to a point of frustration. So, in Cleveland Heights University Heights, we administer the MAP Growth Test in grades three through high school in the areas of reading, mathematics, and science. So, in the high school, students take the test based on their course enrollment. So, students enrolled in Algebra I, Geometry, English I, and English II, or your typical ninth, ninth and tenth grade English and mathematics courses. And NWEA does not produce a social studies test, so we do not offer a social studies test. The test includes multiple choice questions and what we call technology-enhanced questions or technology-enhanced items. And these are items that require students to create their own responses, like ordering details using a drag-and-drop technique. So, this is an example of the math question that a student taking the Math Level 2 to 5 test may see. So, this actually comes from the Number and Operations goal area, and it's also an example of a drag-and-drop question, right? So, here, students are asked to create two fractions that are equivalent to the one given, which is one-third. And when we look at Ohio's learning standards, we see the standard, or students needing to have this skill as early as grade three, where they have to recognize and generate simple equivalent fractions. It's also identified as just a critical area for grade four, and in grade five, they have to apply the skill in order to answer addition and subtraction questions around fractions or using fractions. This is an example question that a student may see on the math test if they are in grade six or higher. It comes from the Statistics and Probability goal area, and you can see students are asked to create a scatter plot, again, by dragging the points to the coordinates of the data provided. So, we see this in grade eight.
May I ask a silly question?
Not silly, but...
Are there provisions for children who have trouble with the mousing part of this?
So, the test is only administered online.
Mm-hmm.
They can use a mouse.
Or a touchpad or whatever, right?
Or a touchpad. So, those are possible add-ons, or mouse is a possible add-on if needed.
Okay.
And going back a slide, they would have to get, you know, here, you're asking for two separate fractions, they'd have to get both of them right to get credit for the question.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, back to what it is and making sure we're understanding how the information is reported. Results are reported in, using a RIT scale to measure what students know. So, the score is available immediately after the student completes and submits their, their test, and they're able to see their score on their screen before they log off. So, the RIT score is a three-digit number that is vertically aligned. So, that means that the scores have the same meaning regardless of the, the grade levels. So, if an eighth grader and a tenth grader have the same score and took the same, like, Math 6+ test, then their scores are approximately at the same grade level. So, wanted to make sure we understand why we use MAP. So, it's untimed. We know that sometimes students can become frustrated or feel overwhelmed if the, the test is timed. However, we find that typical completion is between 45 and 60 minutes. It's administered three times per school year. They call their administration periods, or refer to them by the season, so you have your fall test, which typically happens in September, the winter test is in January, and the spring test is in May. For the last couple of years, it's, it's been an optional piece for, for the spring test. Again, scoring is immediate, it's aligned to Ohio State standards, and the test is nationally normed.
So, if it takes longer than 45 minutes for a student to take the test, are we messing with the schedule, the bell schedule, on the days that they're taking MAP tests? Or do they come back tomorrow and finish?
They will either, like, for the middle school, for example, they have their intervention enrichment period, so they might start in their, within earlier class and complete it during that period, or just complete it over two periods.
Allison, you mentioned that the May, or the spring one has been optional. Who decides that?
The buildings.
So, the principal decides, or individual teachers decide?
It varies by building.
Okay. So, we're not consistent across the board?
Well, there is, for example, our third graders, because one of the benefits of the test is that it can be used as an alternative to the, the third-grade reading guarantee, or not an alternative to it, but as a promotion score for students to meet the third-grade reading guarantee. So, in that instance, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be optional. So, any, any third grader in jeopardy of being retained would need to take the test.
All right, okay. Thank you.
So, benefit of the test being nationally normed is that it allows us to put our results in a context. We've talked about this in previous sessions, so it allows us to take that RIT score and say, well, is that good? Is it bad? Have we met the target? So, the system identifies what is the typical performance for each grade level at each point in time of the year, so fall, winter, or spring. And the key thing to remember is that a student performing at the 50th percentile is form, is performing at the typical level for that grade level. Then another benefit of the test is that we are able to look at both growth and achievement. So, this particular view is from one of the reports that's available in MAP. It's actually real data from the district. And what it shows is performance, or the growth from the fall test, or the test at the beginning of the year, and then the winter test that was taken in January. So, along the horizontal axis, you'll see each grade level.
So, it's the same students taking the test twice?
Yes.
In the same year?
So, for, for example, like, this group of third graders, it, they only appear if they have a data point in the fall and in the winter.
Okay.
And then along the vertical axis, here, you can see the RIT growth or the improvement in the scores.
So, that's just an absolute number? It's not a percentile or anything?
When we look at it...
It's the, it's the increase in score?
Correct, it's the increase in score. And then, when we look at it, again, for, like, a whole grade level, like, we're looking at it here, they use the average RIT to represent the entire grade level.
Got it.
So, you're...
I'm sorry.
Cool.
So, I'm interested in the, the difference between the observed growth and the projected growth. And I guess I'm, I'm wondering, it's, it's interesting because at times, you know, you look at fourth grade, we're right on, and at other times, we're pretty far off. So, help me understand that, that difference. I'm just wondering, in 10th grade, it seems, it seems as though we're not projecting enough growth because we're experiencing much more growth. Do we, do we adjust our expectation, or, or how does that work? Why is there such a big difference?
Well, let, let me make sure that we're interpreting it in, in the same way. So, the orange diamond represents the projected growth. So, again, what the, by norming...
Being fall and winter?
Correct. So, NWA MAP says, based on average performance, students who typically, typically begin at the beginning of the year or starting at this RIT will score at, you know, this, this other RIT in the wintertime, right? So, that's our projected. What we see in the blue bar is the actual growth, right? So, for grade three, we, that, that grade level exceeded what was the projected performance. And in here, too, grade nine, we exceeded projected performance. So, you see that we exceeded, we met or exceeded in all, but we were slightly under in grade And actually, based on the norms, in grades three, eight, nine, and 10, the, the school growth, or the grade level growth there, is actually in, in the high 90th percentile. So, it is, it is beyond what is typical growth for a, a grade level.
The scale goes from zero to 12. Is that the full scale?
It's, so, the scale adjusts with the test, so I'm not sure if the range is the same for the science test or for the reading test?
But for, for math, it ends at 12. This is the entire...
So, based on our scores and the, the projected performance, it didn't need to go beyond 12?
Right, because the third graders got 11 points more on average in the winter than they did in the fall. If, if our average growth had been 14 points, then you'd just throw another line up there.
Correct.
Right. So, this just reflects actual numbers.
Correct.
So, what happened to those poor fourth graders? I mean, you know, they did six points better on average in the winter than in the fall, but...
Well, and this is one of the benefits of using the test. You know, we, we never use a single data point to, to, you know, label or mark a particular grade, or, you know, we wouldn't toss out our curriculum materials or blame it on teachers to say, what's happening in grade four, like, what's going on? But it would cause us to look deeper at the results, so the tests are organized around different strands, like, like our, our example questions. So, can we see, is there a particular concern around number and operations or around statistics and probability? We would also look at the performance of that cohort over time, right? So, this happens to be from fall to winter, well, we, because they were tested as third graders...
What happens to those kids next year in fifth grade?
And we can look back, right? So, we would see, as, as third graders, you know, where were they? What was their area, what were their areas of strength? What were their areas of, of weakness? Had they made improvements? We would, not toss out, but we would check our, our curriculum materials. Is there something in, no, is there something in the order, or, you know, were kids heavier in one area than, than the other? So, what it allows us to do is look at it on, on a whole, and then ask additional questions and pull additional data and resources. Another thing that we would do that's, again, not exactly tied with NWA MAP, is look at, you know, performance on unit tests around a specific, a specific skill or content area.
And there's no orange diamonds on 11th and 12th grade?
There aren't, and we actually only, only test a very small number of 11th and 12th graders. Again, when you think about our target group, our students in the courses traditionally taken by first-time ninth and 10th graders, Algebra I, Geometry...
Okay, all right.
Right, by 11th and 12th grade, most of the students are, are done with those ones.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
To Dan's point, though, so, you know, we've got this unexpected discrepancy, it's a good one, where, where the students' results were better than expected, that also would lead me to want to ask lots of questions about what happened in the classroom. It's like, okay, something good here, can we replicate it elsewhere? Whatever it is.
Yes, possibly.
Okay.
Any other questions or additional comments?
Okay, great. So, MAP can meet multiple needs. So, in addition to helping us guide curricular decisions, guiding teachers in day-to-day instruction, we are able to use it as a screener for gifted identification in the areas of reading and mathematics. It is a predictive tool for Ohio State test performance and college readiness tests, so the ACT and the SAT. And as I said, it can be used as an alternative to help students reach the third-grade promotion score. So, just a little bit of information when it comes to gifted, students who score in the 95th percentile or higher in mathematics or reading can be identified as gifted in those areas, and, and that's defined by the Ohio Department of Education. That's not our rule, that's the state's rule. And then, the 2018, 19, so, this school year, so far, we have 72 students with new identifications?
Isn't that across...
That's from grades three through 10, correct.
Okay, all right.
That is in grades three through 10. And, again, they can qualify in reading or math or both. So, we have a couple of kiddos who have...
But don't they also, don't they have to have something else in addition? Didn't they change that? Oh, what is it, reading, math, superior cog?
That's only if you're going to be serviced in the gifted program, but...
Spatial...
You can still be identified as gifted in reading or gifted in math, or identified and gifted as both of those and not be superior cog.
And not do anything about it, so to speak.
Or, and not be superior cog.
Okay, yeah.
You're not, you don't have to be gifted, or, you're, how can I say this? You don't have to have all three to be identified as gifted. That was just to get into the self-contains when that was started.
I see.
But we do need...
Back in however many years ago. But now, we don't follow that strict guidance. Any, you can be gifted in one of these and get into self-contained, or you can be superior cog, but you don't have to have all three.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Okay. Because I thought it was superior cognitive abilities plus one of the other two subject areas.
Used to be, back when the self-contained was first created, back in, I'm trying to think when that was, 2010, maybe? 2011?
When my daughter made the transition from fourth to fifth.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that's when they were throwing a battery of tests at her.
Right.
Okay.
But, that, that has been eased up. You, you can have either or.
Okay.
Sorry, Allison, we hijacked your conversation.
Perfect. Well, it's, all these things connect, you know?
Yeah, so, 72 students were identified this year based on...
Correct.
This test.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
And highlighted the connections between the MAP data and gifted and programming. So, this is helpful in that, in using MAP, because the test is given multiple times a year, so it allows us to, you know, catch students who may be more mobile or not in at the beginning of the school year or the end of the school year, or in grades two and six when we do whole-level screening, including that of ability testing for the superior cognitive ID.
Right. Or a kid who was sick that day or didn't test well that day because they were sick or whatever.
Correct.
One of the things that I really like about MAP scores on a day-to-day, just sort of how a teacher uses it in the classroom, is for, for reading, since I teach social studies, one of the most useful pieces is that in a, in a reading score, a student has reading informational text, they have one score for reading informational text and another score for reading fiction text. And so, as a classroom teacher in social studies, I can really use the data, because they're two different skill sets. There's a lot of overlap, but they really are significantly different skill sets. And so, a classroom teacher can use those scores to make different groupings as you're doing breakout sessions and you're doing small group work to focus on this, that, or the other thing, and to provide materials at appropriate reading levels. You know, you're not going to hand an eighth grader who's reading even at, at, at level, you know, a copy of, of the Federalist Papers without annotations, but you should hand an eighth grader who's reading significantly above level, a copy of the Federalist Papers and have them annotate them. So, you know, these are real sort of boots on the grounds, here's how these, these scores are used in an everyday classroom to help, you know, deliver instruction right in the sweet spot for each kid.
I'd have to use that right in the sweet spot.
Yes.
This is just a quick example of how MAP predicts, or the information that we get in terms of predicting college readiness. And you can see, this is from the winter, so the January administration, and it shows performance, or predicted performance on the ACT in the top graph and the SAT for the bottom graph.
So, what are your colors?
Yeah, what are your colors?
The, the, blue and yellow is on track for a remediation-free score on the ACT, and then blue is remediation-free on the SAT. So, it shows that just over 50% of current ninth graders, so that's just for the ninth grade, if they were to take the SAT in the spring of 2019, so in the next two months...
As ninth graders?
As ninth graders, just over half of them would be on track, or they predict they would score a remediation-free score. And the other thing to point out, in terms of the color and comparing the ACT and the SAT, that we see that more students are predicted to perform at an on-track level on the SAT than the ACT.
And we administer SATs to everybody in 11th grade, is that right?
Correct.
So, they get one free shot?
So, a few years ago, the Ohio Department of Education required all school districts to administer one of the two college readiness tests to students in the 11th grade. Cleveland Heights had a history of providing free opportunities for our students to take the PSAT for a number of reasons.
And that's 10th grade?
Correct.
Right, okay.
So, we actually pay for it for students in the 10th grade, which is not the typical year they take it. Well, it's not the, it's 10th grade and 11th grade. When students take the PSAT as 11th graders, they are entered into the National Merit Qualifying Exam. So, it gives them an opportunity to receive scholarships, it's where our students who are... It's where our students who are acknowledged for being National Achievement Scholars or National Merit Scholars are identified, when they take it as 11th graders. So we administer it to students as 10th graders, again, so they can have that preview before going into the qualifying test in grade 11. So because we had that history of taking the PSAT, we also use the PSAT scores to identify students to participate in Advanced Placement or AP courses. We made the decision to administer the SAT as our school day test, or the test that we would give to students for free. There was some conversation about that because there was a belief that the ACT was easier for students and that more students took the SAT. So by choosing, or excuse me, the ACT, so by choosing the SAT as our free administration, we actually got more students to be exposed to the SAT and the questions there without them, without any negative on their part, so it had no cost to them. And I believe that this is evidence of seeing that decision, you know, pay off.
So why is MAP score not a good predictor of ACT performance? Because I'm seeing, you know, 2/3 to 1/3.
I don't think that it means it's not a strong predictor. What it says to me is that it says students are more likely to perform, or they're more on-track as it relates to the SAT as opposed to the ACT. And I don't have the answer as to why, but that's what that says to me.
So what would we do with this data? We're looking at 9th graders, we know they're going to be taking this test in 11th grade. What would we be doing between their 9th grade now in April and they're going to be taking this test in a year and a half? What would we do differently to help get them more ready?
Well, what we have been doing, what we continue to do is make sure that our teachers have an understanding of what is tested on the SAT and how it's tested. We know that there is a direct relationship between the courses that students take and their ability to complete things like Algebra II before they're exposed to the test, right? So what MAP allows us to do is identify the skills that students may need to work on to help them become ready and to get them through Algebra II and to move on to pre-calculus or statistics. So just being able to use the, actually, it might be, it's not coming up quite yet, but, you know, Dan did a fabulous introduction in looking at the class breakdown report and how you can use the information from the students' RIT scores to group students and to identify specific skills that they need to work on.
So we're looking at this data here for 9th grade. Would we look at this same again for the same cohort in 10th grade to see if more are ready?
Yes. We actually don't wait until the 10th grade. We are able to look at it at every administration.
Okay.
Now, all students, all 10th graders take the PSAT?
Not necessarily. Oh, I'm sorry, PSAT, I thought you were saying the MAP test. Yes, 10th and 11th graders. So again, MAP has multiple uses. We can also use it for our 3rd grade kiddos as a means to promote. Now, overall, a majority of our students meet the requirement using the 3rd grade test. So there are 2 ways within the 3rd grade test. You can have a particular scale score, that's the 3-digit number, or a reading sub-score, which is the 2-digit number. But within that, 74% of our 3rd graders from the 2017, 2018, so these are not current 3rd graders, also had an NWA MAP reading promotion score. So if they didn't have the OST score, they could have used their NWA MAP score.
Are all of those 75% included in the 84%? Or is there, there's kids who do well on one and not the other?
Correct.
Okay.
So again, one of the huge ways that we're able to use the results is part of our, integrating it into part of our daily classroom instruction. And I am most impressed with the way it allows teachers to talk with students about their performance and to set goals with them based on what they've seen, excuse me. And students are able to see their progress over time. And we talked earlier about the scores being vertically aligned or having the same meaning, right? Regardless of whether I'm in the 4th grade or the 6th grade. So again, students can understand, know and understand their RIT score and see how they've improved. Teachers are using the results to personalize learning. So Khan Academy is a free resource that teachers can use to link student results to specific videos and practice questions. In addition to that, the district has invested in Study Island, which creates individualized learning plans or paths for students. I've seen teachers use those as part of their, like, classroom centers or rotations for kids, and I've seen it used as part of individual work time. Because it's web-based, students also have the opportunity to work on their plans at home. At our last grade-level team meetings, so my colleagues from Curriculum and Instruction, in particular Julie Raffa, showed teachers how to use Study Island, not only as an individual tool, but as a, like, a group game. So the teachers can select specific skills or standard and, like, run them through a quiz to be able to see how kids, how much they retain, how much they understand the specific concept. And then another way that we use MAP results is to communicate performance to parents. So I'm going to show you next is a couple of slides with example reports. So these are, these are reports used for training. So student names that you see are not real students and school names are not our schools. So this is an example of the Student Profile Report. This has been developed by MAP in the last few years. And you can just see by the 2 screenshots, it includes a tremendous amount of information. But more importantly, it provides text that helps us put the information in context. So what do I do with this score? What does this number mean? How are they performing? If we're talking about how they perform compared to other students, if we're talking about growth, or if we're just talking about achievement. Here in this particular area, teachers can see and students can see how they've performed around specific goal areas. So this is an example of the Student's Mathematics Report. So again, it's going to break down that overall math score into specific areas: algebra thinking, statistics and probability, measurement, geometry. Again, this helps the teacher drill down to see where a kid's strong and where do they need additional support and improvement. I'm also really impressed with, this is at the bottom portion of the screen in the report, it allows the teacher to see every administration of MAP the students have. So you can see that, again, that we really stress the performance over time so that you can, you can see how much kids have grown from where they've started. And even in the example, you see that there are some times when students drop or dip in performance. It's not unusual, and being able to look at multiple students and to see that pattern lets you know that it's okay. Now, there is one challenge with this report. So we, it's generally reserved for face-to-face conferences or having, like, having a dialogue with a parent and/or a student because it is a bear to try to print out. It is multiple pages, they have not figured out a way to make it easy to, what we call batch print, or print for multiple students at a time, and it takes up a couple sheets of paper. So again, this one is best used for, like, a conference when a teacher is working with a parent or a small team to share the information as opposed to sending it out to everybody. There's also the Student Progress Report. So if a teacher or a school grade level sends out a report, it's most likely to be the Student Progress Report. And it captures the same key information in terms of looking at the student's performance over time. So it does include their actual RIT score and then the percentile to help families put that information into context. On the left of this screen, you'll see an example of a class breakdown report. Again, back to Mr. Heinz's example of how he uses the results as a social studies teacher. The view there is actually of a class breakdown for primary grades, but you'll see the goal areas along the left-hand side. So that's where we see the separation between informational text, literary text, and vocabulary for the way that we use it. So the product, the test identifies or clusters students based on their performance around those specific areas. And again, which makes it helpful to group students for small group instruction, determine where to enter for your point of instruction, how to select practice materials, and, you know, including reading materials. And then it also identifies ways for us to challenge students. Sometimes we can, you know, focus more heavily on where kids need to be brought up or where they, we need to intervene, but it's also a great way to identify where students might benefit from more challenging work. Again, just wanted to add that on, to give a summary of what I've indicated and then to let the viewing audience know that there are additional resources available. And then within the presentation, on the final slide there, there's an example of a parent's guide to mapping or a letter that can be sent out with the scores. So it's available on our website and board members have a paper copy there in front of you. So on the front, it gives an overview of the, you know, what the scores are, what they mean, how we use the results. And on the back, it gives the most recent norming information. There are example questions. So because MAP is an adaptive test, it's difficult, you know, no 2 students are going to see the exact same questions in the exact same orders. But what they do provide, and you have paper copies of these, are examples of some of the questions from each of the areas. Now, I will say, I did not print the entire booklet. I only printed the pages of the tests that we use, right? Didn't make any sense to copy the kindergarten ones, and we don't use it.
When did we start sending MAP scores back to parents?
So we started administering tests back in the 2013-2014 school year. So it's been a practice that's always, it's a practice that's always been encouraged. I do not send them here from the board office, just because of the number of results and the time that it would take. So the resources are there and available on our resource portal. And I ask buildings to communicate results with families, either through conferences or to mail them. They're also available on the Infinite Campus portal, so parents can see student results as soon as the testing windows have closed.
This is also available at the middle school guidance department's webpage.
Hi, thank you. Any other questions or information that you'd like?
This is good. I've been looking for this kind of stuff for a long time, so I guess I didn't dig deep enough into the website to find it. I've also asked...
Yeah, I've never received it.
I mean, we get the letter in the mail, but I'd always look at it and go, "Okay, I don't know what this means." And then one time, I actually set up time with the principal because I'm like, "What does this mean?" And she explained it to me, which was kind, but no one ever pointed me to these resources. So thank you, Allison, I appreciate that.
Thank you for the opportunity to share.
Yeah, we need to find a way to get this more, you know, front and center for parents to see. I did have a couple of questions, additional questions, because I've been asking them throughout, so thank you for bearing with us. So it says, "Most of the schools do the 3 times a year, and we do the 3 times a year? Is that pretty standard? I mean, there are some schools that don't do it 3 times a year, only do it twice a year?
There are some grade levels in some schools that have not. I can check for you and look...
I'm just kind of curious, like, is it the majority? You know, is it 75% of the schools do it or 10% of the schools do that?
There are times in the year when it just gets test.
Exactly, that's what I'm kind of concerned about.
Crazy, we're in the middle of one, we're in the middle or starting one right now. And, you know, it is this constant battle between assessment and instruction. So, you know, those instructional minutes are hard to come by sometimes. So I certainly can understand there may be, and it's worse in some grades than in others, some courses than in others. So I know that those, as you know very well, it's, those are tough decisions.
Right. And I'm just concerned about that.
And then we have to strike the balance between being able to, you know, making sure that teachers have that and students have that break, but then also making sure that we have information that will help the next group of teachers that are going to be working with them. Many of our buildings include MAP results as part of their building-level action plans and looking at the performance of students over the course of the year and whether or not they've improved. And, you know, they select very specific action steps that they're going to work on. So many want to see those results so that they know the impact of their decision-making. I had a third point and I just forgot that fast, I'm sorry. My age is showing. It'll come back to me probably at a, oh, I do remember what it was because it wasn't related directly to MAP. And I remember, you know, the lesson learned, I think it was last year, a year before last, we administer a test in the early grades, in kindergarten, 1st, 2nd, and 3rd grade as needed, called DIBELS. And I was the genius and said, "You know what? This middle administration, we don't need this middle-of-the-year administration. It's also done beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year." So we're not going to do it. Too much testing that's going on. We'll be fine if we have the beginning-of-the-year measure and the end-of-the-year measure. And I learned very quickly that that did not make many people happy. I learned all of a sudden at this test that I thought people didn't want to administer, that they were only administering because the person at the board told them to. It was like, "No, this is very much needed, this is very helpful information." So, you know, that's, I leave it open. So again, I can check to get specific numbers for you to see who in the last 2 years has administered that screen or given that screen test.
Yeah, or even if NWA has some, I mean, they may have some data that, you know, 50% of the schools do it 3 times a year and 50% do 2 times a year.
Oh, I don't know nationally, I can tell you, I can tell...
Well, you can tell us locally.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, I'm just curious. And then another question I had is, I know some tests have cultural bias, do we know whether or not this test does? I mean, I'm looking at the picture here of the group who created it, and it's not very diverse. On slide...
Yeah.
18. So I don't know, I just wonder if there's any information on that.
So the greatest way to remove human bias is through, at least my understanding and my research, is through non-verbal exams and questioning where you don't have to have a set of prior experiences in order to answer the questions, right? So when we think about, bless you, in the area of gifted testing, the nagly area is often offered as, you know, one of the better tests to use because it's about looking at patterns and it doesn't require any background experiences. MAP provided 2 examples there where, you know, one question was about recycling, which I think most kids in our district have some connection to and can understand. There is variety in the names that are used. I'm sure there could be some improvement in the types of questions and the way that they are formatted to make them less culturally biased, but I'm not 100% sure the level of prior cultural, or of cultural, I'd say, weight on one particular culture that might give one group a greater advantage than another.
Okay. I was just curious if there was any information from the company that puts this out on that?
No, they don't usually, they don't usually indicate that their tests are more or less biased for a particular group or do any research on it at all. I haven't seen that.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
I know that I am speaking for Jim Posh right now when I express how disappointed he is. He really, we all really look forward to your deep dive, and I know this is not a deep dive that you gave us tonight, but your dive into data. We always learn a great deal. And I really thank you for your time this evening and your taking what can be somewhat intimidating and making it attainable. So thank you for that.
Thank you, I appreciate this, very kind of you.
I appreciate your input as a classroom teacher that has experience with it, sharing how you have used the results in your day-to-day work.
Very welcome.
Molly, Beverly?
No, I just appreciate you presenting this for us this evening.
I'm going to go home and read all these tests.
I know, no, I got reading.
Because I'm feeling very curious.
Remember, they are just an example, because the tests are adaptive. I will point out one other thing. I believe in full disclosure, if you notice on the front of your test of the example questions, these are based on the Common Core and science, and national science standards. So we know that Ohio has modified the previously adopted Common Core standards and has Ohio's learning standards, but they are still very similar in many respects. But again, I don't want to give the impression that I was trying to mislead you.
Yeah, we, Ohio's new learning standards are this much, just to give our state legislature a little bit of breathing room, because so many Ohioans were breathing down their throat about the inappropriate nature of the Common Core standards. Baby steps.
Well, thank you, Allison. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And I echo Dan. We always enjoy when we have you here and you go through this with us. And we're sorry, we pepper you with tons of questions, but it's because we're really curious and interested in this.
Not a problem. And I'll work with Mr. Wartman, who's always extremely helpful, to see how we might be able to lift up some of this information, so parents can access it more easily.
Great.
If anybody can do it, he can.
Thank you, yes. Thank you so much. So that's all we have on our agenda. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Could I have a couple, just a couple little things? We've had some great items that are worth sharing recently. First of all, I want to share that we are doing a joint walkthrough of our middle schools tomorrow. The, a number of members of the Board of Education are going to walk through our construction sites with some of our colleagues in the city of Cleveland Heights, the City Council, and some of their good folks, as well as University Heights City Council and some others.
South Euclid.
South Euclid has been invited as well, which is important. That's great. So we're doing that as an extension of the Bond Accountability Commission's work. Looking forward to that. The middle school project, as with the entire, we're wrapping up now, the entire bond project that the community generously entrusted to us. We are on time and on schedule. I'm always happy to report that. So that's happening tomorrow. Also, the Heights Coalition for Public Education. If folks have not yet started to follow, the Heights Coalition for Public Education, I strongly encourage them to do so. The Coalition issued a letter this week that I am proud to be a signer to, as are the rest of the members of the Board of Education. And the letter is to our state superintendent, and the letter encourages the state superintendent to repeal, to support the repeal of House Bill 70, which is the school takeover bill. The letter is very specific in the commitment of the signers to the belief that HB70 is undemocratic. HB70 creates a system that is unaccountable, and it is non-democratic by removing the democratically-elected members of that community to run their schools. And so it encourages the superintendent to continue and press for the repeal of HB70. So we all certainly support those efforts. Want to do a wonderful shout-out to the Heights Schools Foundation. We had our pancake breakfast this past weekend. We served over 300 pancake breakfasts and had a number of people tour the building. It was great. I had a wonderful experience with some folks who actually sort of just happened upon it. They're not grads, but they moved to Cleveland Heights and they came upon the pancake breakfast. They're in the building for something else. And they ended up sitting down and having breakfast, and they actually bought a couple of Heights Tigers t-shirts, because they just said, you know, we are part of this community, we're putting down roots, and they are now officially members of Tiger Nation. So that was a really nice, nice moment at the pancake breakfast for me. Want to remind folks that on April 30th, the district is having its literacy night. We are having author Janet Woodson join us. It is going to be a fantastic event. And the final thing that's on my calendar that is worth, that, well, there's lots of stuff worth sharing that I want to share, is the Heights High Distinguished Alumni Hall of Fame is having our annual inductions on May 30th, and there is just a fantastic, it is the variety of areas that our grads have shown themselves exceptionally in, that is, to me, very inspiring, and I hope it is for our students as well. So, just a couple little updates.
Is that May 3rd?
That is May 3rd, yeah.
Okay, you said May 30th.
Oh, sorry. No, it's May 3rd.
May 3rd, okay.
May 3rd. It's going to be a great weekend at Heights High.
The other thing happening that week is the Reaching Heights Spelling Bee on Wednesday the 1st of May. So just between One Book, One District and the Alumni Hall of Fame induction.
And our Cleveland Heights Tigers varsity baseball team tonight took it to Maple Heights in a seven-to-two win. I can tell you that a pitcher I know well, it looks like threw six complete innings and shutouts, so he'll have a sore arm tonight at home.
Thank you for that up-to-the-minute.
Yes, there we go.
A good text, or? All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Then a second?
Yes.
We are now adjourned? Oh, no, wait, Mr. Gainer has to call the roll. Will you call the roll?
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Yes.